Call this meeting at order at seven oh one P M. Roll call please.
Councilmember Amparano.
Here.
Councilmember Burnworth.
Here.
Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dale.
Here.
Mayor Eugenio.
Here. Amber, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Marita, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Um, madam, may I understand that there's been a, uh, a request to move items E five and E seven uh, from the uh, action portion of the agenda to consent? So we would uh, ask that you uh, um, that, that there's a motion and action to do uh, to move those.
Second.
I have a motion from Amparano and a second from Dale uh, to move E five and E seven to the consent agenda. Um, see for C one, uh, matters not appearing on the agenda.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I do, I do need a.
Oh, a vote, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to C one, matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor and at that time state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves a right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the council in writing. Please step forward. State your name, please.
Good evening, my name is Chuck Jernigan. Uh, one thousand O D A Drive in Imperial, I was a little disappointed, I thought the item of this fifteenth street Imperial Avenue is gonna be agendized so we could have a little bit longer to discuss it. But since it's not, uh, I'd just like to make a few comments, nothing has improved. But it, it's always been said, if you have a problem, don't bring it up, let's have a solution. I might have a temporary solution since we control the signal lights. And the primary problem with the traffic is east and west traffic. And those signal lights are both go on at the same time. So what I'm suggesting is that we stagger those, so all you do is have westbound traffic going, no eastbound traffic. And then when the westbound traffic gets stopped, then you have the eastbound traffic going, that way you don't have a mess in the middle. And also what I'd recommend is that the only time, one of the other problems is the crossing guards are out there, and when the light is green, the traffic that's going eastbound can't turn northbound on interstate, or excuse me, highway eighty-six, because the kids are crossing. I was there this morning and it took about two minutes to cross and only three cars were able to turn northbound. So what I'm suggesting is we can contact the school and have them only take their crossing guards out if we are implementing this, this synchronization of the signal lights, they only cross the kids during the westbound traffic going green. Not when the eastbound traffic is green. So that way, the traffic that's going northbound won't be stopped by the kids crossing. Does that make any sense? And this is something Mr. Loper might be able to do because we do our own maintenance on the signal lights now, is that correct? We have technicians and specialists that can coordinate that, these things are like computers, we can program and anything we want. And this might be a temporary solution to the hazard that's out there. And I'll also, I'd also like before my three minutes is up, do we have a status report on the studies?
Uh, with the, with the consultant that the city is retaining in connection with highway six is, is gathering data. Uh, I understand that it should, should not be too much longer before we get, uh, receive that data, I don't have a timeframe associated with it.
Let me ask you this, when you contracted to the, the consultant, was there time limits put on the study? And if so, what were those?
Um, well, they, they were uh, retained to perform a study. Then the, the, uh, intersection we're talking about, it, it was basically an add-on. And so uh, uh, there wasn't really a specific timeframe associated with that, they're aware of the urgency of, of it though.
I understand the add-on has already been completed in the study by Mrs. Brown last week. And we're just waiting for the rest of the study, back to my question is, what's the time parameters on the rest of the study, when will it be completed contractually?
I don't, I, as I sit here now, I don't know what the timeframe is in the, in their contract to, to complete the study, is that your inquiry?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have that timeframe.
Do you, Ms. Brown?
So the, the study itself should be completed in its raw form by the end of December. We are expediting at least that portion of the study that you're talking about, but we're looking at a, a full corridor um, picture as far as from Barione to Neckle, obviously to take, take all of that in as far as traffic measures. Um, we do anticipate, the study itself is associated with the um, SR eighty-six vision blueprint, so it is, is much larger of that. The entire contract of that is through July of next year, the study is one component of that.
As a community member, when will I be able to see the raw study?
It's our anticipation that on, if not the December first meeting, but the December fifteenth meeting, that it will be agendized for discussion.
So, I'll be back in two weeks, I guess you guys meet over two weeks. Is there a plan maybe to, to put this implement, at least study it in the, a day or two? If we can do a configuration on the signal lights to remedy this, I mean, I would like to see it kind of as a, a major priority. I met Mr. Holbrook out there the other day at the post office and he was absolutely right, at seven o'clock in the morning, there is no traffic problem out there. So, will we be able to answer the question on the configuration of the signal lights, or will it, do I need to come back and ask, or?
As we indicated last time, I would anticipate that an- anything that happens out there is gonna involve collaboration with the school district. So the, the, the signal light changes you're talking about, whether or not that's, that, that will completely solve or uh, mitigate the issue. Um, we don't know as we sit here, but there will be collaboration with the school, so uh, Chuck, I would not anticipate that we're gonna have a final answer at, at the next meeting, although there will be discussion or at, at one of the December meetings.
Not being obnoxious, but why? I mean, this is just a simple, maybe a simple phone call, with Jackie in the school, the engineers could be configured like that. And this is something you could do in three or four days.
Mr. Jernigan, I'm sorry to interrupt, but for the sake of time, we do have to move on.
Pardon me?
Uh, for the sake of time, we do have to move on, your three minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Any other matters not on tonight, tonight's agenda, please step forward, state your name.
I'm George Taylor, I'm the operations manager of Republic Services. Uh, good afternoon. Um, so I was at a, a council meeting, I actually presented to a council meeting last night regarding S B thirteen eighty-three. Uh, it was in conjunction with the city of Brawley and Cal Recycle. It was made very clear that Cal Recycle is going to be um, somewhat harsh uh, in their deadline for the January first uh, implementation of S B thirteen eighty-three. Um, we um, I uh, made it clear to the, the council that I was, we as, as Republic Services are ready to go. Uh, but the, the key component of that is going to be an ordinance from, from the city, City of Imperial here. Um, we uh, did present in front of uh, the council, we would be glad to present in front of the council here. Uh, we did it in conjunction with, uh, well, as I said, with Brawley and Cal Recycle. Cal Recycle has offered uh, to do some sort of telephonic uh, or Zoom meeting um, uh, to present. Uh, and then we can present in person uh, if need be, but I just wanted to uh, help you understand um, that Cal Recycle is moving forward with that January first deadline. Um, the council itself uh, um, vented a lot and I would, I don't blame them for venting a lot. Uh, but in the end of it, at the end of it, they did pass their ordinance five zero, so uh, I just wanted to offer our um, assistance uh, with working with the council uh, and the staff um, to uh, to help them implement uh, you know, or help with any ordinance for S B thirteen eighty-three. Thank you.
Thank you.
What it costs to fill one of your trucks and take it to Sacramento and dump it.
Um.
Cause I'll be glad to pay it, just let me know and I'll be happy to write you a check.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, uh, that was the sentiment last night also.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other matters not appearing on tonight's agenda? And Ms. Brown, did you receive anything in writing?
No, Madam Mayor, and there are no members joining us virtually this evening.
Okay, thank you. For matters appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address the council concerning, I don't think there are any, so, we'll move on.
Madam Mayor, if I may, um, just for the record, we didn't have any reportable action from closed session.
Oh, thank you, thank you for reminding me. All right, uh, moving on to D consent agenda, uh, D one approval, or sorry, so moving on to D, all items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council by one motion without discussion, should any, should any council member or other person request that any item be considered separately, uh, that item will be taken up at the time determined by the mayor, uh, we will be also including E five and E seven.
Second.
I have a motion by Amparano and a second by Dale, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to E one, uh, discussion action, Christmas in a Small Town Snow Scene.
Good evening, um, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The City of Imperial and Imperial Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce is presenting in partnership the Christmas in a Small Town event on December eleventh from three P M until nine P M in downtown Imperial. The snow scene, which features a toboggan run, is beyond, um, is a beloved element of the December Imperial Market Days event and will now be featured at Christmas in a Small Town. An agreement with Arctic Glacier USA provides a snow scene which Arctic Glacier provides fifty tons of snow to be blown, groomed, and molded by their personnel, equipment, and machinery. The snow scene is not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars and fourteen thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and sixteen cents. Staff requests a city council's authorization of this agreement with Arctic Glacier to provide the snow scene for the December eleventh Christmas in a Small Town event, not to exceed this amount.
You, any questions or comments?
So moved.
Second.
Forward to it.
Thank you very much.
I have a motion by Dale for the authorization of agreement with Arctic Glacier USA Inc. to provide snow scene for Christmas in a small town and a second by Burnworth, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to E two, Russell Court Subdivision Unit Two, F M twenty-seven dash twenty-nine to eighty-two.
Good evening, council, the item for you is for the monumentation for Russell Court Subdivision Unit Two. A final walkthrough was completed on November first, twenty twenty-one. And all the, all the limitation was found to be complete. The staff recommends um, acceptance of man, monumentation for Russell Court Subdivision Unit Two and to release monumentation bond, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Real quick, if I may, um, when does our warranty start on this stuff?
Uh, and it will be on November first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so we're gonna be on top of that, make sure our.
Yes, always.
And all that, so we don't have any problems later on down the road?
This is only for the monumentation, but yes, we'll.
Okay. Make a motion to approve?
Second. All right, a motion by Amparano to, for the approval and acceptance mon- monumentation of Russell Court Subdivision Unit Two and a second by Dale, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
You, uh, moving on to E three, Russell Court Subdivision Unit One Park and Retention Basin.
Council, the item before you is for the park and retention basin located within unit one. A final walkthrough was completed on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. And at this time, the park and retention basin was found to be completed. Staff recommends acceptance, approval and acceptance of the park retention basin, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Formal basins.
It, it is, it, it is a little bit different, you, you won't see um, grass on this location, you have gravel. Um, you have a uh, path of DG, it's, it's uh, more of a desert type.
I'm going to bring back a picture that I saw, I, I actually saw a basin in San Luis, Arizona that has dirt around the outside, which could be rock if you wanted to put that in there. But the bottom was interesting, they raised up the bottom of the retention basin by about eighteen to twenty inches and they grew grass. And it was beautiful and it's something that we might consider in the future. I'll bring you some pictures, next time I'm in San Luis, I'll take a picture of it. But it's something I haven't seen before, cause normally we just have what we, what we see. Um, I, I will say that the soil there is much different than ours. But at the same token, I think that if we had something that's a raised bed for future use, not now, but we could look at something like that, so I'll, I'll send some pictures to you, next time I'm over there, I'll take some pictures, send it.
I have a question for you, and a rainstorm that we had in September, how did that hold up with?
Uh, we had some issues with the grading, um, uh, uh, I mean, at a few locations, but we were able to fix it. That's why we, uh, the inspection was completed until um, later on. It was mostly at the west side of it.
How did that, the DG hold up in the, the, the desert landscape? Or that gave insight that, did it hold up a lot better than we have now?
Yeah, the issues were more, more, mostly at the bottom of the grading, that was it.
Okay.
I have one more question. Um, in the brilliant wisdom of whoever come up with this idea to do this kind of crap, do they take into account that we only have about an inch of rain a year or two? Um, I'm just curious, is it?
We're talking Sacramento weather. We always plan for the worst, I mean, you never know where you're gonna get that hundred-year storm.
Certified Q S P Q C.
So you're saying they're an educated idiot to come up with the idea?
Standard.
Thank you.
It's called, well, never mind.
I make a motion to approve.
One question, uh, moving forward, are we gonna still continue with these rotation, retention basin parks or no?
Do we have any others, uh, do we have any others set to?
If I can just clarify, um, this was, this subdivision was accepted, don't I believe in two thousand seven, okay, so, so that is uh, to complete to that standard, which our parks and community development have worked and I apologize if Don's microphone's having some technical difficulties. Um, but uh, moving forward, any obviously new subdivisions, for example, those that you just approved for the morning glory and things moving forward, retention parks are no longer allowed in our standard.
We have no, none in the queue? Not, not if I can help, no, thank you.
I'll, I'll second that. I'm gonna have a second, so I'll second that.
All right, so I have a motion uh, by Tucker and a second by Dale for the approval and acceptance of Russell Court Subdivision Unit One Park and Retention Basin, please vote.
I'll say no.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to E four, Russell Court Subdivision Unit Three, F M twenty-seven dash ninety-eight to one hundred.
Council, the um, item before you is the monumentation of Russell Court Subdivision Unit Three. A final walkthrough was completed on November first, twenty twenty-one, and at this time, the monumentation was found to be completed. Uh, staff recommends acceptance of monumentation for Russell Court Subdivision Unit Three, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Second.
I have a motion uh, by, who's it, a motion by Dale and a second by Amparano for the, oh, invert that. For the approval and acceptance of monumentation of Russell Court Subdivision Unit Three, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
On to E six, independent assurance, uh, independent assurance services for Second Street rehabilitation and reconstruction project from old SR eighty-six to P Street, R F P P two thousand twenty-one dash zero nine.
Council, the item before you is the independent insurance services for Second Street Rehab um, and reconstruction project from SR eighty-six to P Street. The independent insurance services contract is for the verification as a third party of the accuracy of the test results obtained from quality control and acceptance testing required by Caltrans. We released an R F B and we only received one proposal from Sierra material testing and inspections in the amount of thirty-two thousand ninety-five dollar and zero cents. And staff recommends city council to award a contract of, for independent insurance services to Sierra material testing inspection in the amount of thirty-two thousand ninety-five dollars and zero cents. And I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Yeah, I assume that, that's um, what you anticipated to come in at, or did you have any idea?
No, no, we, we estimated between twenty-five thousand to forty-five thousand, so it is, it is um, right on the money's.
Let me get this right, we're hiring Sierra material and testing and inspection to test and, and verify the testing that the other company did.
Um, yes, as required by Caltrans.
This is another California thing.
It is a California thing, yes.
Right.
Say it that way, that's how I like it.
There are money's going.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
I have a, a motion by Tucker and a second by Dale to award contract for independent assurance services to Sierra Material Testing, please vote.
Motion carries four one.
Voted, you voted against it? You're a good man, good, a good man.
Okay, moving on to E eight, uh, change order number five for wastewater treatment plant upgrade project.
I don't know if you can see the smile on my face. These are one of those change orders and, and I'm sorry, before you read it, I'm gonna interrupt you. When I read this, I went, another change order, and I got done reading, I went, oh my God, I like this change order. So, Jackie?
Oh no.
I, I don't, I don't know if you see it, I'm, I'm excited, these are the change orders I do wanna see, I'd like to see them. And you know what, I probably don't have any questions.
This is a balancing change order for the wastewater treatment plant. It um, encompasses a couple of things, the biggest part of this is we've removed the tower from the contract, we're gonna do that in-house with our own forced labor account. We will still have the expense of the tower, but you've already seen it, seen the, and it's been approved. Uh, so when we actually install the tower, it'll be way less than this, it'll just be the cost of the tower. Uh, the other thing was uh, the, the paving and a couple of small incidentals, so your balancing change order is a credit change order for a hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Great, you know how many taco cards you could buy with this? So, you know.
I'm willing to try.
I, 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 you know what, I, I will make a motion to approve this one.
Check it.
I heard of a motion by Amparano and a second by Dale for the approval and acceptance of change order number five for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project in the credit amount of one hundred fifteen thousand dollars, four hundred, one hundred fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
There's been other happy times on my time in the council, this is one of them.
Happy time.
You know, if it was the other way, I'd have a lot more questions. Okay.
Right, moving on to department reports, Mr. Holbrook, anything to report?
No report, thank you.
Laura, anything to report? Amber, anything to report? Chief Estrada, anything? Chief Barra? All right. Max, Captain Sheffield?
Thought you could join us.
Alex Estrada, anything to report? Mr. Loper? Mr. Lopez?
Oh, Madam Mayor, nothing to report.
Mr. Mora?
Nothing tonight.
All right, then moving on to the city manager report, Mr. Marita?
I'm at a mayor and council, nothing for me except I'm, I'm looking forward to the snow run.
It's a lot of snow.
Don't eat the brown ice. Cold shrewdness.
Right, Ms. Brown, anything to report?
Uh, no, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Moving on to city council, Mr. Amparano, anything to report?
Only thing I'm gonna say is life's good, thank you staff for all the hard work you do.
Councilmember Tucker, anything to report? Councilwoman Burnworth?
Uh, I just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and have, be safe over the holidays.
Thank you, and Mayor Pro Tem Dale?
Just have a couple things I wanna say real quick. First of all, yes, I have a happy and safe Thanksgiving and enjoy time with your family and, and have plenty of people over and enjoy it, that's what this is for. Um, second thing is staff, you know that none of this is ever personal. I am disgusted with the state of California and I can't help being a smart ass, and I'm gonna be that way probably until I'm gone and that's gonna be short. And so, I just always want you to know, none of this is ever personal. I can't stand this state, I can't believe I would ever say this, but I'm to that point now. So, when I make comments like I do, it's because I'm disgusted. It's okay to have filth and trash on the streets of Los Angeles and San Francisco, and that's okay, but we have to have rules that create all kinds of mess for our waste recycling companies and us and everybody else, and it's a joke, so I hope they're listening and watching. Because they are a waste of air and time, so, thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Uh, do we have, we have a movie in the park this Friday, correct? Uh, can you remind us, Amber, when uh, when and what it'll be?
It will be showing, um, Dr. Seuss's The Grinch That Stole Christmas at Savannah Park. Um, at five, it's, the movie starts at five thirty P M, so as soon as everyone gets off work, come to the park and have a great time. Thank you.
And I just wanted to remind everyone about No Shave November, I see a lot of facial hair out here in the um, audience, so I think the link has been put up on, it, it's on our city pages, it also on the police page for donations, uh, Uh, just on the city page, okay. I did uh bring my bright nails, but this is bright for me, um, I uh did my nails in green, last year I did turquoise for my mother-in-law who died of ovarian cancer, this year it's green for my dear friend and sensei, um, Tony who passed away a couple of years ago, um, of uh can't live, cancer of the liver, so green signifies that. So please make a donation if you um have not so far on our city page. Um, that's all I have, thank you for everyone for joining us this evening, our next meeting uh will be scheduled for Wednesday, December first at seven P M, everyone have a good night, thank you.